This conference will now be recorded.
Right. Most gracious to have me, Father Lord, we come to you in your name, Jesus. We just like say thank you for this beautiful day that you bestowed upon us today. We thank you for the weather. I pray, Father Lord, you bless us tonight as we go into our meeting tonight. You be with us. Give us the knowledge, the wisdom and the understanding to make this community the better than it has ever been. I do pray, Father, tonight you be with the families of the victims and the lost in the horrific traffic plane crash yesterday. Pray, Father, you be with those family members during this time. Ask this in your name, Jesus. Amen.
If you would, please remain down and have a moment's silence for people that pass on. Mark Gray, John Russell, and Commissioner Waters, just led to the hate. Thank you. I mean, you said, and if you would, please check your cell phones, put them off. There we go. Thanks, everybody, for coming, especially on Valentine's Day. I brought some things for the board, for your wives, girlfriends, significant others, however you feel. If you want to eat yourself, that's fine. But thanks, everybody, for being here this evening. We'll start with the adoption of the agenda. Have a motion.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor? And now for the adoption of the consent agenda. Have a motion. All right, second. All in favor? So move. Next up is staff updates. Zach, take it away.
All right, so a couple of quick updates since our last Board of Commissioners meeting. We have the ribbon cutting there over the schoolhouse crew segment of Cape Carteret Trail. And then we wrapped up work on the section in front of Starbucks and had a ribbon cutting out there as well. And we also had some winter weather. Want to recognize the Cape Carteret Police Department route, you know, all night, making sure things stayed safe, and also snap some photos of some of the conditions throughout town. And also want to mention, we have the St. Patrick's Day food truck radio on St. Patrick's Day, March 17, 5:00 to 8:00 p.m., and that'll be right out there in front of the police department and then coming along Dolphin Street. And this is going to be an opportunity to weigh in on the Resilient Coastal Communities Program and give us feedback on hazards, climate change, and other potential items in Cape Carteret of significance. So this is a good opportunity, if you have flooding in your neighborhoods or know of flooding hotspots, it's a good way to make sure that those are included in the list of projects and that information is passed along to the consultant who's working on the projects. Definitely encourage everybody to come out between 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. And then also, if you can't make it out on that day, there is the option that you can visit the online survey, and then there's also paper copies of the survey that were put at everybody's seat this evening. So we definitely encourage you to fill those surveys out, to identify any areas that haven't already been identified and voice any concerns about some future resiliency, climate change, and potential hazards that we face here in Cape Carteret. So a good opportunity to make sure it's included in that list. And then filling in for Chief tonight, just one mention, we have our Cape Carteret Neighborhood Watch meeting tomorrow evening, right here in this room. So that's at 6:00 p.m., and I know we're going to have some guest speakers, and Commissioner Walters will be there as well. So definitely looking forward to that. If you can, spread the word to your neighbors and make sure they're aware of the Neighborhood Watch Program. The Public Works Department did a great job getting all of the new Cape Carteret Neighborhood Watch signs up at the entrance to each neighborhood and at the entrances into Cape Carteret. So those were funded through the No Shave November fundraiser this fall. So that was awesome to be able to see those proceeds go to a great initiative like this. So had a really good turnout at the last Neighborhood Watch meeting, and I think we'll probably double in size for tomorrow. So definitely encourage everybody to pass the word along to your neighbors and really a good program to get involved with. And then just running through some of the Public Works items, this is the ditch back there off of Starlight. So they were able to get in there and clear out this ditch, and they did a really good job. Hopefully, that'll improve the flow of water through there significantly, and it's something we'll be watching to make sure everything's flowing like it should. This is that area that the board recently secured that easement for, and Public Works got right in there and got it all cleaned out. So they did a really outstanding job with that. And that's all I have for this evening.
Thanks, Zach. Next up will be planning board updates. Susan, have you? Hang on a second, let me get you a microphone, so. Last for the people online.
The planning board met on February 1st for its regular meeting. We had one agenda item, and that was the discussion of the final draft of the land use plan. The planning board had previously reviewed and commented on several drafts of the Kama Land Use Plan and walked us through a few of the final changes, and those changes were also provided to the Board of Commissioners for review prior to your special meeting last week. Since the final draft was dropped during the meeting, the PB members didn't have a chance to review it, so we did not take a vote to endorse it at that point. Following discussion, the planning board agreed to the following schedule. The history rewrite would be due by February 5th. Changes and comments to the land use plan would be due by noon on February 7th. And that was so that we could incorporate, or so Summit could incorporate, all of our comments prior to you getting it for your review. What that would do for us is it would give us an opportunity to see what your changes were before we went ahead and did our vote. Now, initially, we were going to meet on February 10th for a little special meeting. We were going to do it virtually in order to vote so that you could vote to adopt at this meeting. But since the Board of Commissioners wants to take a little bit more time in your review, we will do our vote to endorse on, at the March meeting, so that you can, if you so wish, you could go ahead and do a vote to adopt or not adopt at the March 14th meeting. With the completion of the UDO and the land use plan, the PB is now free to work on other projects, and we stand ready to be tasked by the Board of Commissioners. Recommendations for future tasking is to update the UDO in accordance with the new land use plan, to add a new zoning category to meet the land use plan for mixed-use residential development, to review the existing and emerging conditions and make recommendations to the Board of Commissioners on potential impacts, to focus on the rapidly growing school-age demographic and its impact on school capacity and recreation, to identify specific infrastructure requirements to meet the 2040 land use plan, and to prioritize needs. Coming up at the, for the March 1st meeting will be the presentation by the North Carolina Federation. They will give us a shoreline stabilization, living shoreline stabilization brief, kind of a little primer, to help us understand methods that we can work with nature and promote the valuable habitat, and steps that we can take to incorporate a living shoreline along our waterfront property. That's it.
Next up is public comment. We have Salt.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners, folks, friends. I have prepared some written statements, so there will be no question about what I say, and I will disperse them to the members, and I'll just read it first of all. My subject is stormwater. And it seems to me that lately, the stormwater plan in Cape Carteret seems to be build higher than your neighbor. Build up your lot and shed all your stormwater on your neighbor. Well, I was extremely alarmed today to observe dump trucks depositing field dirt on 300 Live Oak Drive beside my property at 302 Live Oak Drive. The elevation of that corner lot has been raised by several feet in the center of the lot, where I am told a house will be placed by future homes. I can see no provision made to keep water from flowing directly onto my property. I understand there are stormwater provisions in place to guarantee that any rainfall should remain on the newly developed, recently elevated property and not immediately flow onto my property. Is that a yes?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. I would like to see the engineered plan for this, and also the zoning permit from the town of Cape Carteret, which allowed this field to be deposited, followed by the placement of a modular home. If such an engineered plan is not in place, or if the zoning permit has been issued by mistake, I want to stop work order placed until this can be rectified very truly yours. So this lot next to this recently developed lot is very important to me. It has been permitted for two septic tank permits, which will allow me to pump onto two waterfront Cape Carteret lots onto this lot. Now, if you let the neighbor flood me, I will take action. Thank you.
That's all we have for. Next up, discussion of Clubhouse Drive, and presentation.
Yes, yeah. Go ahead and try to summarize and fill in for what Chief had concluded with his study. I don't know if any conclusions were reached, other than just get the data together. The first item or the first requested action, this has kind of been an ongoing point of discussion over the past several months. And the Board of Commissioners are asked to consider whether to provide direction to town staff to either remove the speed bumps on Clubhouse Drive or to leave those in place. And then the second item is to provide direction to staff on whether the speed limit should be reduced on certain roadways, such as Clubhouse Drive. Based on the results of the CCPD speed study, if the board would like to reduce the speed limit, a text amendment to Schedule III of the Code of Ordinances will be required to reflect the new speed limit. This text amendment can be presented at the March 14, 2022 Board of Commissioners meeting. And just in the background info, this is a follow-up from some of the previous discussions in the packet. There are the results of the CCPD speed study, as well as a letter from Chief Hunter regarding speed bumps. I think, looking through the results of the speed study, in most of these areas, the average speed that was observed, in most cases, is less than the posted speed limit. What that would indicate to me is that if that speed still appears to be too fast, then a speed limit reduction would be required to see any sort of resolution there. If people already aren't speeding and they're traveling below that posted speed limit, you'd have to reduce that speed down further if you want to see any meaningful result from it. And so that's something to consider or to leave it in place. You know, you've got to break, you've got to break it down. By roadway here on this, it's got Star Hill Drive, Pine Lake Road. Looking at Clubhouse specifically, the average speed on Clubhouse Drive was 23.53 miles per hour, with the two highest clocks being at 31 miles per hour, but the average being 23.53. So the two requested actions would be to provide direction to staff on whether to remove the speed bumps or to leave those in place. And then if a speed limit reduction is desired, we can bring that back to the next meeting for consideration.
Any comments? The most, Commissioner Waters?
Yes, when this issue came up on previous board meetings, there was some review, and as to my best recollection, that the water that added a made a motion to remove the speed bumps, I think, and lower the speed limit possibly.
I retract that. It's part of lowering the speed.
What I'm trying to say is, at that time, I felt like it was two separate issues, and the speed issue should come back again for public comment. But tonight, I'm going to make a motion to move the speed bumps.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. All in favor? Motion carries five to zero.
And I'd like to make a second motion to leave the speed limit, as is, since the chief has supplied us with a very thorough speed study that shows us no really throughout time.
And I'll second that motion.
I don't think we have to do a motion for leaving the law do.
We don't. It would just, if.
If you're going to change it, I think.
Okay.
So it stays. Yeah, that'd be fine.
Yeah. I mean, going along with what Chief Hunter said in his memo, that they did not support the use of speed bumps as a traffic calming device. I agree with that. Also, going back to the speed, I'm like what Ms. Paxton Hope said earlier in another meeting. It's hard to get your vehicle to go less than 25 miles per hour when you use the cruise control. I tried that myself, and I had to run my foot on the brake, keep it under 20 miles per hour. So that's where I go with that, either way.
Next up is the discussion of the Kama Land Use Plan.
All right, so we really don't have any updates beyond what was sent out, I believe, on Friday, which just had the comments from the previous special meeting. I don't think we received, not that I'm aware of, at least, there's not been any definitive feedback or anything like that that we've received since that previous meeting. So there's really nothing further to present on this item. We did have the public hearing scheduled for tonight, so it could be a good opportunity, go ahead and open up that public hearing, if there are comments on the draft plan. And then Ann Darby's also online this evening. She can answer if there's any questions that weren't answered last week, or if there's questions that come up from the public, then we can definitely run through those. And then otherwise, we just ask that, just to formally do it, I know that we discussed doing it at the previous meeting, but a motion to defer the actual vote on the plan until the March 14, 2022 BOC meeting. So we just, that's a formal action, but it reflects what we discussed at the last meeting.
We'll do that after we do the public hearing, because we have two people sign up to speak for them. So we'll go ahead and let them have their say. So I entertain a motion to go into the public hearing. Second. All right, we are now having a regular meeting in the public hearing. We have, as I said, we have two people signing to speak after the discussion of the Kama Land Use Plan. First up is Susan Pinch.
I am very sorry to everyone, because I thought that we'd have a little bit more discussion about the land use plan. I could not find it online. I asked Heather to send it to me. I have not seen it. But in a little bit that I've heard about from people, I wanted to at least share with y'all where I'm coming from. My name is Susan Pinch, and I've been a Cape Carteret resident for almost five years. My husband, my children, and I came here several times a year for the past 35 years to visit my family, and we feel very welcomed here. I would like to ask people to think about why they moved into this area. If it was because, like me, you were attracted to the small-town feel, then it is important to vote no, I'm assuming this proposal is to move the town center someplace else, that, to vote no for that. If you moved here to have a lifestyle you could afford on your retirement income like me, then I feel a no vote for this proposal will also be important, because I could see this would be increasing taxes. But even more important than those reasons, and I'm coming at this from information that I heard verbally, I did not see the plan, but I do know from what I've heard that we're, the commission is looking to put Town Hall is on property that a private citizen owns. And I would like to you to think about your freedom, your rights, and how you would feel if this proposal affected you and your rights. I'd like to read to you a couple of sections of the U.S. Constitution, the same constitution many of our military and veterans swore to uphold. Most of us are very familiar with the Fifth Amendment, which spells out our rights to remain silent, not to be held for a crime without indictment. But the end of the Fifth Amendment says, quote, "Nor be deprived of life, liberty, or property without due process of law, nor shall private property be taken for public use without just compensation." Also, Section 1 of the Fourteenth Amendment says in part, "No state shall make or enforce any law which shall abridge the privileges or immunities of citizens of the United States. Nor shall any state deprive any person of life, liberty, or property without due process of law, nor deny to any person within its jurisdiction equal protection of the laws." So I understand that this Kama proposal, or whatever, has been tabled for the next month, but I felt that it was important for me to come up and talk to you about where I'm coming from as a citizen of Cape Carteret. Thank you for your time.
I have previously sent this statement to Summit and to the planning board, but this Board of Commissioners has not had the advantage of seeing this from me in writing. So I'm going to quote part of the statement I sent previously to the planning board and to Summit. I'll skip the part about being in quarantine for COVID. All right. A couple of items which need to be brought before the board, that the plan presented completely eliminates a viable existing business, namely, the Golf and Dolphin Driving Range, and eliminates the only sewer treatment system which serves almost our entire existing business district, without providing any alternative for such. The proposal is a pie in the sky without any funding proposals other than a magic wand. As a property owner, I do not support the land use proposal. I suggest more thought needs to be given to this. This is from me as a citizen. I don't have a plan. I've been asked to provide a plan to the town. I don't have a plan. When asked specifically what I wanted, I said, "I believe, due to an earlier text amendment, which I had nothing to do with, that allowed residential be interspersed with B-20, I said, 'Fine, go ahead and zone all my property, manatee investment property, B-20, and we'll just see how that goes.' But I do not support the land use plan nor the UDO. And I have previously said, if the town insists on a surrender of a percentage of my property that I would develop to the town, either in land, percentage, or money, I will pay the taxes as long as I live and keep it vacant." Thank you. Now, my son wanted to come and sign up and speak, but his health prevented him from doing that. If you wish, I will read.
Thank you.
Yes, or do you want to hear from Max? I signed up if he could.
Go ahead, go ahead. That's what this is about, public hearing.
Unfortunately, his health is such that it's very difficult for him right now. He will be undergoing surgery, hopefully, to improve his quality of life, but he could not be with us tonight. So Max's statement, which he texted to me and I printed for you, gentlemen and ladies. "Enjoy forward-thinking and planning for the future as much as anyone, and will always be willing, when able, to work with the town on all endeavors. In its current state, the land use plan's ambition outweighs its feasibility. There are too many what-ifs and if-onlies. To my knowledge, the town needs, but does not have, the following: permission from the NC DOT to cross Highway 58 so close to the town's major intersection." I wish I had asked you to put up the plan so people could see what we're talking about, but I'm sorry, I didn't. "A plan to replace sewer capacity for the current and future businesses they wish to attract. This is because the land use plan shows a road going right over the top of the sewer plant, as well as right through the driving range. Property for the new town buildings and facilities. The town doesn't have any. So why move it?" I agree with Ms. Pinch. "$15 million, which is a conservative estimate of the overall cost, and the property owner's consent to sell to the town for the roads and infrastructure needed." I didn't sign up, but may I say something?
Absolutely.
Well, I moved to Cape Carteret in 1987. It was a tiny, tiny little town then. And hardly any stores. It was just a Piggly Wiggly and a drugstore and Maxway and a gas station and a town hall and a liquor store. And it has grown a lot since then. And ever since I've been here, I felt the town needed radials. We needed business. And we cannot have business if we don't have a sewer system. So whatever Paxton was saying about the sewer system being covered by a road, that's not a good idea, and proposed sewer system. And another thing I live against, I spoke against changing all of our 30 into multiple family homes, because we in Cape Carteret, we were supposed to have restrictive covenants, and Mr. McLean planned it to be a luxury community, a golfing community. And I spoke to someone who bought property on our street, and he said, "Well, gee, you know, I have an empty lot in that store for my own privacy." And he said, "Somebody could buy, if they wanted to move to Cape Carteret, they could buy your lot and put three units on it." Now, I don't know what the zoning or whatever restrictive laws are on that. And he scared me half to death. He said he could tear this.
laws are on that. And he scared me half to death. He said he could tear his house down where he bought it, and he could put up multifamily homes. And, and you would call it spot zoning if, if a person did that. But this is this whole great big yellow area that they want to change, Arden Oaks and, and Country Club Point into multifamily homes. And, and we don't want that. Nobody, I, it scared me half to death. And I went door to door and handed out the email address. And so I heard the head of the planning board say they had a lot of traffic against it, and my neighbor put it on three different sites on the internet. And I think we need businesses to bring in taxes. I always thought from the very beginning, we should have had a professional building. And when we don't have it, we keep getting these tiny little stores. And I don't know how much taxes they bring in, but, or how much a professional building brings in. But I know that all of us little homeowners can't support the town all by ourselves. And I love Cape Carteret, and I've been coming to the meetings ever since my husband died. He didn't let me come because he knows I'm very dedicated in whatever I'm involved in. But I just wanted to keep it operating, but not a big city, you know? Zack has brought in so many changes. Nothing was happening before. And we, nobody did any getting of bond, you know, extra money to buy any, do anything. Like, he got all that money for the, the trail, and, and he has all these little festivals and things. And, and people come and they enjoy it. And we should compliment Zack on everything that he has done. And I just wanted to keep it as much as possible like it is. I'll say another thing about multiple family homes where you have townhouses. My experience with my granddaughter-in-law in Greenville was, she was so proud. She was an announcer for WNCT, and she bought her first property. Well, it was fine when it was all homeowners, but then it got to be renters. And now it's shooting and all kinds of things going on. So when you have townhouses, you don't always have control. Thank you.
All right. So with that said, I obtain a motion to go out of the public hearing and back into regular meetings. All right, second. All favor. All right, now that we are back in the program meeting, we'll need to have a motion to defer, which we discussed anyway, an official vote to defer the vote on this plan until the next board meeting. Five seconds. All right, hold on, favor. Next up, selection of contractor for Arden Oaks Connector segment.
All right. So the town of Cape Carteret recently solicited proposals for the construction of the asphalt multi-use trail along Taylor Nation Road between Western Carteret Library and our notes. The town has obtained all necessary permits to begin construction along this section. The town posted an RFP on January 4, 2022, with a proposal due date of January, January 28, 2022, and did not receive any bids. And then we also resolicited a second round of bids, and we received two proposals, one from Able Paving and Seal Coating Incorporated, doing business as Able Asphalt Services, in the amount of $83,000, and then the second bid from M. and W. Land Improvement Incorporated, in the amount of $182,312.24. The town is currently awaiting the dispersment of funds awarded in Session Law 2021-180. Once the funds are received, a budget amendment will be needed to reflect the receipt of these funds and to show the expenditure of funds for the Cape Carteret Trail Project. We are proposing to enter into a contract that is contingent upon the receipt of funds, and that will only commence upon notice to proceed from the town. Entering into a contract at the present time ensures that we will lock these prices in place and can move promptly upon the receipt of funding. The Board of Commissioners are asked to consider authorizing the town manager in consultation with the town attorney. Enter into a contract with the lowest bidder and/or their affiliated companies for a cost not to exceed $83,000 for the construction of the Arden Oaks Connector segment, subject to the future receipt of funds from Session Law 2021-180 and a subsequent budget amendment allocating these funds.
Was Able, did they do the section that we just completed?
Yes, they did. The Starbucks segment and the segment by the Hanty Mart at the school.
Did they do it well according to the plans and specifications?
Yes, yeah. They did a good job, yeah.
Yeah, they were significantly lower on that section, which, you know, made us hesitant, but the work they did was very good.
Are there any outstanding, excuse me, are there any issues on this section of trail that are non-standard that for some reason they didn't have to deal with before?
Yeah, so this section requires them to install stormwater swells. So that's a NC DOT and estate requirement. That's why that cost went up. They were substantially lower when we were on private property from Hanty Mart to the, to the creek. That's what that cost reflects is.
I'm less worried about the total cost as I am their ability to, if there's additional stuff that has to be done, are they capable of doing those things based on their other work? Or is, or is anything vastly outside of their, what, what they did last time?
No, I think, I mean, from what we've seen so far, I think we should be good to go. They did, they did install a pipe for us up there when we were doing the Pettifer Creek Launch Site. They tacked onto a DOT pipe, extended it out. So we have seen some of their pipe work and then also seen some of their grading work as well. So, yeah, we'll make sure, just like with any project, we're keeping a close eye on it. And we're going to have the engineer and surveyor stake out pretty, exactly, exactly where the, the swells are going to be so that we have a good handle on exactly where everything should be in there. So.
Would there be a stipulation of a contract, as I think we've talked about before, that they would not be paid, they would not be paid until the job is complete and done, has been inspected and done correctly?
Yeah, so that's, that's how we approach any of these projects, is that we don't do progress payments or upfront payments when we pay upon the successful completion of work.
Is this one of the contracts that we're bound to take the lowest bidder or bridge?
Responsible, responsible bidder.
Okay, okay.
So far, Mr. Steffey's experience has said they're responsible bidders.
Yeah, I just wanted to throw that out for future reference for board members that didn't, that didn't know the process. Sure, okay.
Zack, moving forward with these three projects, is there a certified or qualified person who actually inspects their work and makes sure it's done accordingly?
Yes, John Freshwater can come back through and inspect. And then we can also, if, if the board wants, and this is probably something we would do because it's in the NC DOT right away, we can do core sampling along the stretch just to make sure we've got the asphalt thickness and we've got the subbase that we want. So it's got to have that six-inch subbase and that inch and a half of asphalt. So we can, we can do core testing if that's the preference of the board. I would recommend doing that.
Last question from me, anyone. Have we de-conflicted or coordinated with the power line, with the power company? They good with everything that we're planning on doing out there underneath their lines?
Yeah, it should, the way that it's oriented through there, it shouldn't have any impacts on any of the existing utility pole locations. And then that next to Gen Autumn, which is the retaining wall for that section, has a bump out where it goes around a utility location there. So we shouldn't have any conflicts. But we'll have it all marked and have 411 verify there's nothing we don't know about out there.
Do we have any idea when we're going to get the funds released from the state?
We're hoping in the near future. I think they had, it's like 100 days from the date that the Session Law was approved. So I know we, we've been super quick on getting everything back to the state. We had to fill out some paperwork to be able to receive it. So I think we're right there in that first batch of dispersments, which is good news.
And so if we approve this contract, the contractor school waiting till we?
Yeah, so I would need to come back in March and then do the budget amendment. But I just want to make sure we lock in these prices. We didn't get any bids that first round of bidding. So knowing what some of the other municipalities are going through right now, we're trying to get contractors, I want to make sure we lock in one while we're able to actually get a good bid. So we don't want to wait longer, and especially with, you know, uncertainty with oil prices and everything, and what that might do to the asphalt prices. I definitely want to lock that in.
Okay.
Tonight if we can.
Any more questions? Is there a motion? Second, all favor. To accept, well, I guess. To approve. It was assumed, I'm sorry. We just did. You ready to hand?
I was waiting, I didn't know.
Okay. Next up is a selection of the contractor for the Arden Oaks Connector. Selection of the contract for our notes connector segment retaining wall.
All right, it's just about the same, then again, same concept. This is for a 150-foot-long retaining wall along that section. That's in between the trail section there and that pond that is adjacent to it, to just to make sure that we're retaining all the material along that section of the trail. We submit, we did two rounds of RFPs, and on both rounds, we only received one submission, which was from Harbor Contract Incorporated, in the amount of $79,700. Same situation again, contingent upon the release of funds through Session Law 2021-180, and that we would only proceed forward once we've done a budget amendment and notice to proceed has been given to the contractor to move forward. So the requested action is for the Board of Commissioners to consider authorizing the town manager in consultation with the town attorney to enter into a contract with the lowest bidder for a cost not to exceed $79,700 for the construction of the Arden Oaks Connector Segment retaining wall, subject to the future receipt of funds from Session Law 2021-180 and a subsequent budget amendment allocating these funds.
Have we used Harbor?
Contract.
Or, or?
Yes, yeah.
Standard of the industry, if you will, or whatever?
Yes, yeah, just a vinyl, vinyl retaining wall. But it has to have a handrail on top of it. So that's where we needed somebody with their general contractors that could work up to that scope. So they're doing a handrail, and then they're doing the retaining wall below.
Similar to a bulkhead, maybe?
Yeah, it'll be just like a bulkhead, but we're going to use the pilings basically sticking out of the ground, and then run the rail off of that. So it should all be kind of tied together.
So the lifespan is basically forever for that?
Yes.
Okay.
Have we used this company on any previous projects?
Yes, the, the same company did the work at Pettifer Creek on all the launches up there, and then also at the, on the walkway over Schoolhouse Creek. That was recently.
Yeah, that was good work. It did really good work.
It was the only bidder?
Yes, and on the second round, so we sent it off to a whole list of contractors. And then on the second round, Ryan even called every one of those contractors and let them know again. And we still only end up with one. So it's, I know everybody's super busy right now. I always like to see more bids than that. But, yeah, he reached out to every one of them, called each one of them. So beyond that, I don't know what else we can do. Can't make people bid for the work.
Are we required to rebid this? Is there any legal reason we have to rebid it with only one respondent?
No, that's, that's why we bid that second time, just to try to cover our basis on that by doing a second round.
This is, is this, all of this retaining wall is going to be outside of wet, 404 Wetlands?
Yes, yeah, it'll be all in upwind area within the NC DOT right away.
All right, do you have a motion?
I will make the motion, authorize the town manager's consultation with the town attorney to, to a contract.
Second, all favor. All right, thank you, gentlemen. All right, next up, consideration for dash cam's grant on BA 2021 2022.6 for various miscellaneous items. And Zack will be speaking on chief's behalf.
Yeah, there we go. There's just a little bit delayed. All right, so this item's kind of a catch-all. We got two items on here. Let's get on, filling in for chief on this one. So we were successful in getting a grant to install in-car dash cameras in all of the police vehicles. So a very exciting accomplishment, and I want to thank Chief McKitty, and I particularly want to thank Officer Bishop, who, who did an outstanding job on, on getting this, these funds for the town. The grant is in the amount of $24,380.92. So we front the cost, we pay for it upfront. Once they're installed, then we request reimbursement through this grant process. It was awarded back in September of 2021. And so something, you know, something that we've wanted to get for a long time. I'm really excited to see us be able to get this. You know, next step's probably body cameras, and we're also looking at a CAD system and trying to get some grants for those as well. So really want to congratulate the police department and Officer Bishop on a job well done, tracking these funds down. And, you know, really glad to see these, these funds coming in. And then the second part of this, it's just accounting for allocating those funds out. So it's requesting that the board approve Budget Amendment 2021 dot 2022 dot six. And that includes the $24,381 for the in-car dash cameras, as well as the revenue from the CCPD No Shave November fundraiser, which was $1,097. And then also the public works income for NC DOT Right Of Way Boeing, which was $1,425. And then donations and T-shirt sale revenues for special events, which was $1,850. The total budget amendment amount is for $28,753. And just ask for the board to consider approving Budget Amendment 2021 dot 2022 dot six.
All right. All favor. All right, I think that's awesome, man.
Yeah, we're excited.
And that's all my thank you to the officers, the chief for giving those funds. That's amazing. I love spending other people's money. All right, next up is appointment to fill the vacant planning board seats. I believe you guys, the general, did they give a, okay, so you guys have a ballot? Yes, thank you. Well, I do not have a ballot. Everybody's here. If y'all would at this time, just go ahead and pick who you like, send them over here, and we'll see what happens.
Yes. Yeah. Yes.
And if you could, you could print your name underneath, your signature as well. Sometimes it's hard to identify people with their signature.
Do you have a copy of it?
All right, we'll let our, our lawyer tell us results.
Have you got to vote again, or?
If you have one. Mr. Mayor, Mike King, Mr. Mike King has three votes. Mr. Mayor, Mike King, Mr. Mike King has three votes, so a majority of the board.
Okay. All right, so Mike King is on the. Planning board now. Somebody let him know. Give him a call. I'd like to thank everybody who applied. I think it's great. We have, we have a lot of people who apply. That's what I love to see is, is our. Our citizens getting involved as much as they are, just like you people being here tonight. I love it, whether we agree or not. Your opinions do matter to this board. Next up is the selection of the mayor pro temp that is held by the commissioner. Don Miller, at this point, Don, you've done an awesome job so far.
Thanks, sir.
I hope I haven't worked you too hard. And that will just, I just have a motion. Everybody has somebody they'd like to nominate or? Never mind, I'm sorry. Because I don't vote, I'll get to see the ballots. Y'all pick somebody.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Jeff Waters has been voted to be the mayor pro temp.
Okay. All right, congratulations, Commissioner Waters. The primary job is to be at my house in the morning, wash my car. Just kidding, it's a pretty thankless job and not a whole lot to do. I think, Don, I can tell you that. I don't think you have to do anything last year, right? So, you know, just in case something happens to me, I. Helping, I'll be at every meeting as much as I can, any event I can. But if not, then Mr. Waters will be the guy to call and complain to.
What was the?
I haven't read them. There, I can do it now though, if you'd like. Commissioner Jeff Waters had three votes. And then Commissioner Charlie Morgan had two votes. And these will be, the ballots will be public record and can be inspected with the clerk.
All right, next up is Commissioner Port Reports and we'll start with Commissioner Martin on the other end. I have lost my nose, but I think I can remember. Zach, I know Sandy's not here, but I see we're evidently, we have not collected any SRO contributions or state grants. Is that correct?
Not sure, I'll have to check on that. I can get you.
Well, the SR, I mean, the, the revenue statement, would it, would it reflect on the revenue statement if we had?
Yes.
Okay, it's saying zero, zero.
Although she usually sent out that notice yet or not, and there's a.
Okay, well, what reason I'm asking, getting kind of, kind of close to the next budget year and, and. You know, I thought we had that, those monies by, by now. Second, on the, the ditch cleaning machine that, that Ryan presented to the board last meeting. I would like to put that on the next agenda for up or down or discussion on, on whether to purchase that. And I think, as I mentioned to you, the commissioners via email today, that. It's obvious that we can spend the, some ARP money on stuff like that and some stormwater. So that frees us up in my mind to move forward with, with helping some of our citizens that, that. God forbid another rain event. Can't even get out of their house, especially over Sutton place. So. Be interested in hearing from you what your thoughts are in the future, the very near, near future on some of those issues and whether we can use that money on those.
Yeah, I think there's a root, eligible uses. I'd say on the, on whatever device we use for cleaning out the culverts. Ryan and I talked before the meeting, we're going to try to have. Those companies come in and do a demo and then we can kind of get an idea of what our best option is. We'll present that at the next meeting. Then take some videos and pictures of each of the processes. So we'll put those up there.
Well, you know, Mayor Becker made a comment, he likes spending other people's money. When it comes to this, I, I don't think we should shortchange. We have the money, let's get a decent piece of equipment if the board approves it, something that'll last the town. And get these culverts underneath these driveways cleaned out. And I think you'll see a tremendous difference in, in, in stormwater.
Absolutely. Yeah, I think it's a good opportunity if we can get the right piece of equipment and. Really allow us to tackle a lot of those culvert pipes that are clogged up years and seasons.
And, and I know you're working with the golf course and their engineers on the Sutton flooding, correct?
Yes, yeah, I reached out last week to ask about the status on the engineering. I was told that they were still in the surveying stage. So. I would just encourage the golf course, if they can help to expedite that process and move that along, I think that would be great.
Yeah, I agree, I agree. We're ready to help. We are ready to help.
I, I think it's, I think it's time to, to start helping our citizens. We've got the money. It's time to move forward. But that's all I've got to say. Thanks for everything that the chief did. Tell the chief thanks for the, and, and Bishop. That was great. That was awesome. Just to, just to add to what you're talking about with the machine, I've reached out to two other companies I've dealt with because I've bought a lot of these machines before and make sure we get. The best bang for the buck. A lot of it's also in the apertures that come with it, such as the nozzles. And you got to be careful, you know, they, but if we get three different ones come in, we compare apples to apples, make sure we really get. Something that's going to last us and do a great job. I'm, I'm really excited about it.
I, I just remember buying the John Deere backhoe and didn't get buckets for.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, so, I mean. All at one time. All right. Charlie?
Adding on to the, the ditch which thing, I would like to see maybe we get a combination machine as well. Dead end vacuum. Also, going back to the conversation pertaining to the neighbors watch meeting tomorrow. I know the first last time we had a meeting here, I mean, they were staying in room only and I expect to see more people here. I, I encourage. Those who are not involved with the neighbors watch, please come out. Be a part of what this community is about, is protecting each other, helping each other. And there will be a guest speaker one night, Tom Rule, who is the chairman of the neighbor watch committee of Emerald Isle. He'll be here along with one of the officers showing how to do the paperwork that goes along with the neighbor watch program. So. Please reach out to your neighbors, please come out tomorrow evening at six o'clock and be a part of this.
I don't have, really have any report. I did want to ask Zach. They, or last couple of days, they've been working over there on Star Hill Drive. The, the power company's been out there putting a new pole up. Is that, was that in relation to a vehicle wrecked? Did a car hit that pole or do you know why they? They were having to replace one of the power poles, right? If you come off a Fox Drive and make a right there on Star Hill and you come down to the next intersection, we got to turn left. They wrapped it there yesterday and then today I think they were finishing it up. Was it?
I don't know.
Did the vehicle hit that pole or is it just?
I don't think I saw anything in any of the pass downs about it, but I can double check and I can get an answer to y'all on what the cause was. It might have just been replacing a leaning pole or an older pole, but no, I didn't see anything specific pop up, so.
Okay, and the, the only reason I'm asking is because I know in the past, that's an intersection that there had been complaints about. People flying through and put stop signs up a few years back and I didn't know there's still an issue there with. Somebody obviously going too fast, missing the stop sign. Cause I had heard a few weeks back that there might have been a vehicle accident hit a pole there. He did not knock the pole down, I know that, but I don't know if that's why they were out there having to replace it.
Officer Hayden, do you know? Thank you.
That's all. I don't have anything.
All right, well, like I said, we had some great news just recently came out. As far as these. Funds were, were getting from the Fed, it started out to where it was very specific. We could only use it for certain things infrastructure-wise, which was mainly like wastewater, sanitary. And so now they've, they've come to their senses and they're going to let the towns pretty much do what we want to. Makes it so much easier for us, like the equipment we're talking about tonight, for us to be able to purchase this and to be able to help out with a lot of stormer. We're trying to fix and get these projects done. We've got the engineering underway now. We're also trying to get more grant money. So. More money we can spend from these grants and others is, is really going to help us. And I like to think we're, we're working smart, maybe not fast, but we're working smart. And we're trying to make sure we're doing these jobs right and we're getting the money that we can appropriate, appropriate for. I was very excited. The last few weeks, I've had two meetings. One was with our local mayors here on this side of the bridge. Just to discuss some of the issues that we have with ourselves. And just trying to create some open channels of discussion and helping each other out. And then this past week, had a meeting with the same towns as well as Emerald Isle, who made a great proposal. They want to throw twenty thousand dollars over our way toward having one of the largest fireworks displays, I believe, on this side of I-95. Corrected that assumption. And also garnering some funds from other facets to make this probably one of the best, largest Fourth of July events in this county. And we're going to have it in our town. And Mac Daddy's has graciously offered to host this. There's going to be some logistic issues, but I just can't thank. Emerald Isle enough for what they're offering to bring over here to us. They're also going to offer us with some public safety, some officers to come over and help with that as well. And naturally, we've got some logistics and things to work out, but monetarily wise, we've not been asked to spend a dime. But we are going to help where we can naturally with logistics and like the afterwards cleanup things we can do like that or that nature. Which I think we should offer to do as, as, as a minimum. So there's really nothing for the board to, you know, get a consensus on. But I did want to let you know that that's in the works. We're going to have another meeting. In a couple of weeks to see, make sure all this is on track. But I think this is very exciting. For our town, it's going to bring a lot of, a lot of attention to us and a lot of, a lot of business to our businesses, which I love. I love to see people using our business, especially our food services and such. And, and Mac Daddy's in particular as well. We're going to be discovered, which we already have, but I just think that's something that's really nice. And in the first meeting, to sort of go back to something Commissioner Martin brought up, which was about the SRL officer, town appellate here. There, I think they've not been participating in the past. They've got a different attitude about it now. And so they're willing to pay their fair share. And so I've seen a lot of change, a lot of coming together with, with our towns in this county. I think it's great. For a long time, I think our county, our in the county sort of been a little vacuum down here and, you know. We pull together and we can get a lot done as, as unified. With that, we have a closed section, I mean, excuse me, a closed meeting we have for attorney, client, commission. I am just tongue tied tonight, please forgive, for attorney-client privilege. Discussion we've got to have. So with that said, I'm going to entertain a motion to go out of the regular meeting and into the closed meeting. I'll make that motion. Second, all in favor? All right, thank you. You're all welcome to sit around and all we're going to do is close when we leave it. But thank you all for coming. Happy Valentine's Day.